Eighth day of April, 2025 at 12:00 PM, and I call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Baladesz.
Here.
Councilmember Fredmore.
Here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Ship.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor, you have four.
Thank you, Georgina. Let's stand for the invocation. Mike, would you mind?
Sure. Good by your heads. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this gorgeous weather that we have outside, and we thank you for reminding us this past weekend while we live in Texas and not other parts of the country. Lord, I pray that you will give us all wisdom today as we listen and hear and make decisions regarding the city of Bertram. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to live in a country where we can meet like this and work on the government that govern ourselves. Lord, we thank you for that. I pray that you will be with our first responders, keep them safe as they're out there protecting us and with our military both here and overseas, Lord. And we pray that you bless all of our elected officials and leaders, all the way from the city, all the way up to the president's office. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Community input. Chad, did you want to?
No.
Oh, you're just signing in? Okay. Fidelia?
I just wanted to remind everybody that...
Can you come up here to the new microphone?
We got the Easter econ, April the 19th, at the park, and it's open to anybody. So be sure and bring your little one from zero to ten.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
It's on Saturday from...
What time, Fidelia? Fidelia, what time?
At 10:00. But we need some help in hiding the eggs, so if anybody can be there around 8:00 o'clock. We'll be, Doc Center will be there with the eggs. And then at 10:00 is when...
Okay.
Okay.
Takes 10 minutes.
All right.
We had 1,600 last year.
Okay, thank you. We now are doing this on the internet, so from now on, we have to have people come up here and talk. That way, it'll be on the internet. Everybody can hear what's going on. We would appreciate that. There is, was supposed to be somebody on the community input for the bathrooms? Hello? Can you just please state your name?
My name's Kalai Brown. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Kalai Brown, and I'm 15 years old. For years, my brother, sister, and I have attended a local homeschool park day at Panther Roadside Park with dozens of different local families. We are very blessed in our small town to have a beautiful park with three different nice play structures, two basketball courts, a tennis court, and a walking and running exercise track. However, this park has a major thing missing. It has no running water, no bathroom besides a stinky porta potty, and no drinking fountain, not even a spigot. Having a bathroom with a sink and drinking fountain is essential in a Texas park. Texas gets insanely hot, and parkgoers need to stay hydrated, safe, and healthy. There should be a clean and sanitary bathroom where there is enough space for a parent to go in and help their young child, and a space to wash their hands. Another example, one time, an unknown parkgoer got sick and vomited inside a tube slide. Because there was no running water, the parent did not have the resources to clean this contaminated mess. Later, our homeschool group arrived. A mom immediately reported the mess to town hall and was reassured that it would be cleaned that day. However, one week later, our group was shocked when we came to find that the vomit was still there. But this time, it was stinkier, infested with maggots and covered in mold. This had been left unsanitary and contaminated for a week, undoubtedly spreading virus and bacteria throughout our town. My mom's friend recognized the seriousness of the situation and handled this herself. She had to clean up the mess with plastic bags and hand sanitizer she just so happened to have in her car, but with no soap, paper towels, or water that is usually found in a park bathroom. This is not the only time that we have arrived at the park and found vomit left behind. We even found vomit all over the basketball court, which was left behind because there was no easy way to clean it up. My mom's friend had to drive to a local business to fill up a bowl of water to attempt to clean this vomit. Besides that, I know plenty of families who just leave their park rather than send their children to the porta potty. Plus, we have to drive to other locations or businesses to fill up water bottles when this runs out. We should not have to leave the park to find water someplace else. This is not necessary. The community is tired of this, and many are here today because we are invested in this much-needed change. I propose the city council quickly budget our taxpayers' money, apply for grants or sponsors, or even donations to fix the park's lack of a bathroom. They could possibly even negotiate a deal with the YMCA to utilize the bathrooms already there, preferably before the dangerous Texas summer heat hits, which would be a wonderful step in the right direction and much appreciated by the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to consent agenda items. 1.1, March 11th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. You got a motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lane. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Department reports, 2.1, Police Department Monthly Activity Report. Chief Brantley?
Still getting used to that, I'm sorry. As far as stats, they're pretty status quo from the last month. There are a few things that are up, like our follow-up investigations. Detective Volk is remaining really busy solving sexual assault, homicide this month. Other things that are down, I think due to our enforcement actions are going to be accidents and stuff like that. We're responding to more assists versus our own accidents, which I think is a good thing. As far as total calls, we ran 317 last month, which is an increase from last month, but it's, I think it's growth-related, not necessarily crime-related. Total of three arrests, which is pretty much the same as last month from either traffic or driving while license invalid, that kind of thing. Traffic stops are up from last month to 254, which I think is a testament to why we're running less accidents. As far as code enforcement, we only have two actions on here that we received. One of them was a non-violation, and one of them, a permit was obtained. Our animal control stuff. Our calls for service, we're seeing an increase in the amount of calls we're running for animals. Whether or not we're finding them, they're usually gone on arrival. We impounded three. None were reclaimed that I know of by owners. Hill Country, we transported three of them to Hill Country Humane Society, and for the fiscal year, we've transported 13, which is less than half of our 40 that were allowed. So we still have 27 remaining spots.
Awesome.
That we're dealing with.
Good deal.
Chief, do you have an update on that Home on Live Oak that was abandoned?
Yes, we actually, we found, if you're talking about the 525, we found another deceased animal in there under the water heater shelf. So we're filing additional charges. The district attorney is still looking at whether or not to file felony tampering with physical evidence charges on at least one of the subjects.
That's a total of three?
Total of three. One dog was almost dead, two were deceased. The one that, the one that almost died, they named him Trooper. He's made a full recovery. He's almost, he's a little over 100 pounds now when I saw him the other day.
Holy...
He doesn't like humans right now.
I bet not. All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
2.2 Municipal Court Report and Monthly Activity, Connie Fliss. Georgina, can you do that for us, please?
In the court for March 2025, total payments received $16,881.24. There were 73 new cases, 72 cases disposed of, 13 new warrants, and 20 warrants closed. During the month of March, there were 11 pre-trials, zero jury or bench trials.
Good. Thank you. 2.3 Development Report and Monthly Activity, Cindy Sanchez. Georgina, would you mind reading that one off, too?
Yeah, there was a total of 395 various inspections performed by Bureau Veritas and 29 permits issued with valuation of $6,401,370.
Thank you. 2.3.1 Utility Engineering Group, Gary?
Thanks. Provided by Monthly Memo, I have a couple of updates to that. On the elevated storage tank and wastewater treatment plant, that's out to bid now. Originally, it was set up to open bids on April 15th in the afternoon. I had a request from a couple of bidders on both of those projects to move the bid date. They were overnighting their bid, so they would need to send it, they're saying on Friday to make the original bid date. So they asked me to move it to the following day. So I agreed and issued an addendum to open bids on April 16th. It doesn't affect the award. It would come to your next council meeting anyway, so we had room in the schedule to meet their request. So instead of the 15th, it's the 16th now. And then on the transmission mains, we have our transmission main project with Water Development Board. We have the contracts back from JM Pipeline. The mayor and Georgina signed those this morning, so they'll be going into Water Development Board for their review and approval.
Thank you, Gary. 2.4 Utility Department Report and Monthly Activity, Adam?
We had only one water leak this month. We did have a booster pump go down at the Roach Well site. It was pulled to be rebuilt. The guys completed 138 work orders. Pumped roughly 9.1 million gallons of water. One of the new hires, Ryan Beatty, completed his 20-hour basic water course, waiting on approval for his test date. Installed new mulch on all the playgrounds, and staff did a lot of time, spent a lot of time repairing irrigation at John May Willard and the ball fields for inspections. Bertram Oaks did get paving done, coated some antholes those last couple days. They're starting installing street signs. Getting close, they're starting to set meter boxes to final grade and bough stacks, something like that.
Okay. Thank you. 2.5 Current Financial Status of the City, Georgina?
For the general operating accounts, through the savings accounts or money market account that we have, $3,128,319.80. Utility or operating counts or enterprise fund, $23,797,376.20. Combined total of $26,925,696, even.
Awesome. Thank you. Public notice. All citizens will have the opportunity to speak and be heard in regards to any of the proposed projects for 3.1 and 3.2. 3.1 Public Hearing on Request for Annexation from Lewis Park LTD for Property With Illegal Description Being Approximately 22 Acres Situated in the Luciano Cabasso Survey Number 3 Abstract Number 179, Burnet County, Texas, And Being A Portion Of A Called 25.67 Acres Described In A Special Warranty Deed To Lewis Park LTD Recorded In Document Number 202212479. Anybody? It's 12:14. We call 3.1, close out. 3.2 Public Hearing To Consider A Concept Plan Subdivision Application From Lewis Park LTD For The Village Legal Description Being 25.67 Acre Track Out Of Luciano Cabasso Survey Number 3 Abstract 179, Bertram, Burnet County, Texas. Applicant Is Requesting A Subdivision Of Land Into 104 Lots. Come up here, please.
My name is Ken Drager. I live at 501 Whitewater in Whitewater Springs. I'm here to talk about the development. I'm going to read this and give it to her for your review, if you'd like. After reviewing the agenda on the April 8th meeting, I'm alarmed to see several new housing developments seeking approval. As a concerned citizen, I urge the city of Bertram to place an immediate moratorium on all new housing and development projects until our water restriction drops to at least a stage two. Because we're at a four now. Water is the lifeboat of our community. With the current stage four restrictions, we are already stretched thin. Approving hundreds of new homes in our town will only further strain our aquifers and deplete our limited water supply. It is not sensible to keep building when we can't guarantee the resources to support it. I respectfully ask the council to act swiftly on this matter and halt all new developments that would place additional pressure on our remaining water. Our community cannot sustain more growth without reliable water supply. Common sense demands we prioritize what we have before adding a new demand. Thank you.
Anybody else? 12:17, and I close 3.2. Action Items. 4.1 Discuss And Consider Ordinance Number 265-040825 An Ordinance Of The City Council Of The City Of Bertram Establishing City Assistance For The Bertram Urban Wine Festival Providing For The Repeal Of Ordinances And Conflict Here With Providing For A Severability Clause And Providing An Effective Date.
So this is really just housekeeping. In the previous ordinance that we had adopted, it had a date specific for this event. We wanted to remove the date specific and just left it open for when they hold their festival, so that we just removed the date.
Okay.
I would think that was the only amendment. Just housekeeping, really.
I make a motion, we accept new ordinance of 265-040825.
Got a motion by Lane and a second by Pat. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. I'll go 4.3 first. Discuss And Consider Concept Plan Subdivision Application And Development Agreement For The Village Subdivision For 104 Lots.
Mayor, during the last meeting, you asked, or we, what was approved was for us to go back and negotiate the DA with Mr. Floyd for his development. As you're aware, he has paid his impact fees for sewer on this development. There is a DA that was in your last packet as well as this packet. I sent Mike reviewed it, had an opportunity to review this agreement. He sent them, there's some minor, I forwarded him to Mr. Floyd just like two seconds before this meeting, so I apologize for that, but I just got it. So, but they are very minor, and I'll let him go through those changes, or not really changes, just questions he has. But the primary question is the PIT, but I'll have him go through his comments that he has on that DA, so that you guys are aware that what's in your packet isn't actually what we're proposing. Or there's questions about what we're proposing.
Yeah, as Georgina said, there's, I don't see anything in here that I feel like is a problem or something that can be worked through. The biggest question is, there's specific references regarding to the creation of a public improvement district. And we've had some emails back and forth about the hiring of a PIT expert by the developer and moving forward with that. And with, and I know we've talked about PIT 101 a couple times before the council, but you know, basically what a PIT is, a public improvement district that allows a developer to recuperate some of its costs for infrastructure that is dedicated for that development. So roads, water, wastewater, drainage, those types of things that are inside of the property that the developer is developing. So normal process, they're done all the time. I'm a fan of PIDs. I mean, I don't have a vote, but I like working with PIDs. But with a PIT comes, what you have to do is, one, you have to get an application. We don't have an application yet, which is fine, because I don't think we're there yet. But part of the crux of a PIT is the Service and Assessment Plan. And basically, what the Service and Assessment Plan does is it takes a piece of property and says, okay, our improvements, our infrastructure improvements that will at some point be dedicated to the city, this is not, you know, HOA maintain, you know, maintain, this is not parks, this is not entry features, things along that line. These are specifically improvements that will be maintained by the public improvement district, right? So it's to be used by the public. And so, but normally what you do, or always what you do, is you start out with an amount, and this is just for, you know, easy math. And so let's say they go out there and like, it's going to be $100 million to do all that infrastructure that's going to be dedicated to the public. And we know in this situation, they're asking for 104 lots. So then you take that, $100 million, divide it by the 104 lots, and then you figure out how long do you want, or are you trying to get the whole $100 million or only part of it? And then you divide it by that number, then you figure out how long do you want your PIT to last? 20, 25 years, 35, 30 years, thinking of those long. And then every year, the property owners for the lots in that subdivision, for that 104, will pay an assessment to the city, it's to the PIT, but it comes to the city. And then the city takes the documents that's received from developers and said, hey, we, this is how much the roads cost, this is how much sewer improvements cost, this is how much water, all that kind of good stuff. And once it's approved by the city or the PIT board, depending on how the city decides to set it up, then the PIT issues a check back to the developer to reimbursement for costs actually expended. But as of right now, I, my concern, if that's what you want to call it, would be entering into a development agreement at this point that basically would bind the city to enter into a PIT. I just don't think we're far enough down the road yet. So that's one of the things that I would want to talk about. Now, if y'all are comfortable with it, I'm not, you know, that's something to be comfortable with. I just, from a legal perspective, I would have a concern of doing that, and we don't know what the PIT's going to look like at this point, because it is, it is a linchpin to this agreement, right? It's not an if or something like that, which is totally fine. These are done all the time, they can absolutely be done. I'm just concerned that we're not far enough down the road. What Georgina was talking about on Friday, I got the, because there was some comments by Gary's firm, and then there was some comments back on, so I got all of those on Friday, and then had the opportunity to read and review all that. And so that's why Georgina was talking about, just got her, my revisions this morning. That's why they haven't had an opportunity to see. There's some other minor things in there, and then I think we need to clear up with regard to what's actually a variance, what's not actually a variance, what's in the concept plan. For like, for example, one of the things that they're talking about doing is this being garden homes. Well, if you look at our subdivision or zoning ordinance, that's 35 foot, my understanding, they're not asking for 35, less than 35 foot, 35 or below. So that's not a variance, that's not something we need to consider, that's just normal, how the process goes. There's some little discussions about lighting and solar lighting and things along the line. Like I said, I don't see anything that concerns me that we can't work out. I think it's all pretty standard, it's just the timing on, particularly the PIT, I think is the biggest issue that concerns me at this point.
Danny, did you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I can address it if you want. I do have two proposals from people who...
Okay, good.
That do PIDs. And basically, they both want me to sign a contract and get started, but I'm like, I'm not signing anything until we go to the city council.
Okay.
Get it approved. And one of them is the Patrick guy that I got a reference from you.
Patrick Moore?
Mm-hmm.
Patrick Moore.
Yeah, so, and he actually has the best proposal, most economical proposal, which in this case is the best. So, and the way I understand a development agreement is, we want the ability to use a PIT. I don't think we have to use a PIT per development agreement, right?
Well, I thought that, I mean, because there was some language in here that basically said that if the city didn't follow through with anything, then y'all could back out. And there was a specific thing in there that said the city will create a PIT, so that's what...
No, I mean, the PIT is exactly like Mike said. It's basically, you sell bonds to lower your building cost, your upfront costs on your subdivision, but the homeowner, the lot owner, will pay that back over a period of time, either 20 to 30 years, so much. And it's part of your property taxes, okay? And that's, so there's actually, according to these consultants, no liability or risk on the city. It's, but you would have to participate in order to sell the bonds to fund it.
So, and so the agreement doesn't talk about that, so you're thinking about doing the bonds through it?
That's what they're saying. It's a reimbursement bond, too.
Well, right. And he's right, there's no liability on part of the city. Everything is very, very clear, the indenture that is done through bond council, because we'll have to bring in bond council for that. All that is very, very clear that the general funds from the city are not at stake, because actually what you do is you put the property that's in that PIT as basically collateral. And so the, what makes me comfortable, I've agreed to like, I think 2.7, but I like a ratio of three to one, so the value of the property is three times the amount of what the bond is. So that way, if something happens, which we all hope that doesn't, that we make sure that there's going to be no liability on the part of the city. So you build that cushion in there to do that. So yeah, he's probably, there's no liability on the part of the city.
Okay.
So the only other question we had, and I had got clarification from Mike, was on one of the comments that we talked about during our meeting, Danny, was parkland, being lieu of parkland. And there was a question whether or not you had enough land to dedicate in lieu of parkland. Because you're HOA, you said you're establishing an HOA, and they would be maintaining the park, that's not really park dedication. Park for the HOA, so the fee would be, and this is a council decision.
You can take care of it, we don't care.
We don't want to take care of this. I don't think the city wants to take care of it. Now, that's not up to me to decide, that's up to the folks up here to decide whether or not they want to parkland in lieu of fee, but I got the feeling that they wanted fee in lieu of parkland. So, because you talked about a dog park, don't see our guys wanting to pick up and clean up after your dog park, so...
I didn't realize the difference, who takes care of it mattered.
It does.
But...
That's what he said to me this afternoon, so...
So we both learned.
Yes.
A while ago about that difference. You know, I'm flexible on that. But like I also said, there's a lot of trees out there, and even though we're asking for 104 lots, there's not going to be 104 lots, because there's going to be a few groups of trees that I just can't push down, and you know...
Well, that land can still be parked, it just, it won't be dedicated park land.
But I can dedicate it to you.
We don't want it. Well, I say I don't, I don't want it.
That's part of our negotiating, then, in other words, you don't want to take care of it, but it needs to count.
I'm going to recommend the council set fees in lieu of. I'll put that out there.
I would negotiate with these people that, well, it still counts as our parkland, even, and we'll take care of it. But anyway, the whole idea of the PIT is to lower the upfront cost to make it affordable for people, because I'm just telling you, I'm already over $20,000 something thousand dollars a lot before we ever get the engineering done and before we ever get any of the work done. I mean, it's going to be hard to get it done, and we're asking for 50-foot lots, too, Gary. I got an email this morning from Gary, whatever, saying, be sure you spell out, even though we're going under the R1A, I believe. It allows for smaller lots, but our concept plan shows 50-foot, and we're not, I don't, I didn't want to go 50-foot, to be honest with you, but that's the only way we can try to make it affordable for people. But we're not going to go below 50-foot.
And he has submitted an application for the zoning that will be on your next agenda, moving forward with an R1A classification, so...
So that's our goal, you know?
Art before the horse, we need to get the concept, we need to get the DA, we need to get, you know, what comes first, but...
Well, the DA, the way it's written, Gary's recommendation is to change, well, we can't change the DA this late in the game, you know, so all y'all could... So all y'all could probably do is say, as long as you stick with the concept plan, go with fifty-foot lots, you know, let's move forward. But every month, we put this off as another month that I can't turn the engineers loose, so. And I'm, or sign the consultant's contract, you know, and.
How long would it take to tidy this thing up?
Well, I mean, so I'm, there's a couple of other items in there, which I'm, just want to make sure that we're using the, we're all on the same page. Like there was a request in there for, actually not request, a statement in there that a waiver of portion of tap fees for the water and sewer mains. I mean, that's not typically tap fees or if you're going to actually put in taps themselves, and that's when we typically waive that. So I didn't know if that was a confusion or if that's what was actually meant by that. And so that was one of the other questions I had.
When we get through the meters and all that, it's going to be at the property lines. And typically, y'all reimburse us about half that.
Yes, and then the reason why it's half is because we still got to go out and buy that meter.
Right, right. And that's typical.
So you're playing, you're setting them boxes and you're doing all that.
Okay, that's what I figured, but that's not what the language said, so I just wanted to make sure that we're.
He'll clean up the language to say that then.
On the same page as that. And then I believe, let me see, I think there's a.
So he agreed to street lighting instead of street?
Instead of a light at each house, we'll go to the intersection, put up street lights, at stop signs, basically. And that's about seven of them or nine, it seemed like.
Oh, and I think the other one was, oh, I know the other one was the, and I can't find it right now. But it's the block lengths. And so there was a statement in there that it could be longer than the thirteen hundred or shorter than the five hundred. But I don't see going through our subdivision ordinance, I don't see that that is a variance that is allowed because our variance say, it's really our variance languages for lots or weird sizes for lots, anything like that. I didn't see anything in the language that allows for variances regarding block length. So that, so we would need to address that issue.
Is that really a variance or is that an exception?
Well, so we have a definition for exceptions and that doesn't fall under definition of exception either. Yeah, I know, so that's the problem. Because as we talked about a couple of meetings ago with another developer that came in here, I don't want to start the precedent with the city council of, we're just going to ignore our ordinances for a situation. Now, if it's something that we think is important and we don't think the thirteen, because I don't know where that came from, not an engineer.
I don't even know where it applies on this, does it even apply on this?
I don't see it.
I don't know the language, I don't know why the language is in there, be honest with you.
So, and he has a little note there, or strike it, so I think he.
Right, exactly.
We don't have anything, these are standard, there's nothing over there. That's probably left over from that engineer's previous one or something. It doesn't apply to us, I don't believe.
That could be, okay, so if that's an issue, that's the case, then it's not.
They cut and paste, huh?
Yeah, so, and there was, there was one other thing in here that was kind of the same thing I was asking Georgina about it. And she said, well, I don't think they're doing that here. And I was like, well, then why is the language in here, asking for it to be done? So it's like I said, there's just little things that I think need to be cleaned up. So I would be fine if the council wanted to go forward with approving the DA and directing staff to work with them and get it executed as quickly as possible.
Okay.
I would be fine with that, and authorizing the mayor to sign it once staff is fine with it.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay.
Gary, do you have anything you want to, okay. All right, thank you Danny.
Y'all need anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Need a motion on that.
I'm okay with it too, Mayor.
You're okay with it? Now we got both of y'all, okay.
So basically, I guess the motion would be answered, I think the concept plan is fine.
Well, yeah, if the DA is approved, the concept plan could be approved.
Okay, so basically, authorize the mayor to execute both the concept plan and the DA once staff has come to an agreement with regard to the language for the DA.
Okay, I got that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the concept plan with the understanding that the mayor and the staff of the city will come to a final agreement.
Got a motion by James and a second by Randall, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Four point two, discuss and consider ordinance number two six four dash zero four zero eight two five and ordinance of the city council of the city of Bertram, Texas, annexing their here and after described territory to the city of Bertram, extending the boundary limits of the city of Bertram so as to include the here and after described approximately twenty-two acre property within the city limits granting to the territory and to all future inhabitants all the rights and privileges or other citizens and binding future inhabitants by all the acts and ordinances of said city and providing for an effective date. Thought we were talking to the Indians there for a little bit. About all the territories and everything we had in here. All right, motions?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance, ordinance number two six four zero four eight two five.
Got a motion by James and a second by Randall, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Four point four, discuss and consider Bertram Chamber of Commerce requests for hotel motel tax funds for eight thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-five Bertram Art Urban Wine Festival. Lori.
Hello, Lori Ringstaff with the Bertram Chamber of Commerce. And we have Art Urban Wine Festival coming up at the end of the month, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And we have about eighty vendors like normal, everything's the same as we've had in the past. And we would like to request the eight thousand dollars of hot funds for advertising and related costs for the festival.
Got any questions?
Beg your electric bill.
Yes, I sent a copy to you. We are working on getting all that changed from the oatmeal festival to the chamber of commerce, so we don't have these issues.
I couldn't, I couldn't get electricity to my property because my name was associated with the account that they didn't pay.
That the oatmeal festival changed to your wife's name, and it's now all paid.
All right, thank you Lori.
I'll make a motion, we approve the eight thousand dollars to the Bertram Chamber of Commerce for the Art Urban Wine Festival.
Got a motion by Randall?
I'll second.
Second by James, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Four point five, discuss and consider petition from BL Hill Investments. So four point five and, let me go ahead and read this. All right. A petition from BL Hill Investments LLC released pursuant to chapter D of chapter forty-two of the Texas Local Government Code for property known as being a one hundred ninety-four point six nine acre tract in Burnet County, Texas, out of Benjamin McKinney Survey number three abstract number five eight zero, Bertram, Texas.
Make a motion, we table four point five.
I'll second. Got a motion by John and a second by Randall, all.
Just the request to table, which you did see in writing, is to table it to the May meeting, not indefinitely.
Okay, to the May meeting, okay. Motion by, got a motion by John, and a second by Randall, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes. Four point six, discuss and consider petition from Mary Montgomery and Montgomery Bertram Investments LLC at Texas Limited Partnership, release pursuant to subchapter D of chapter forty-two of the Texas Local Government Code for property known as being as twenty-two hundred fifty-one point one six acre tract in Burnet County, Texas, out of the Lamuel Blakely Survey number two abstract number forty-seven, Bertram, Texas.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we table four point seven.
Four point six.
Four point six.
Four point six? Until May.
Got a motion by Randall?
Second.
And a second by John, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Four point seven, discuss and consider cities permit of water supply and expansion of water and sewer system and supply options. Are we going in? Okay. We don't need to go into council, private council for that. So, four point seven, nothing with it. Okay. Future agenda items? Okay, nothing, all right. Need a motion?
Make a motion, we dismiss.
Got a motion by Lane and a second by Randall, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Twelve thirty-nine.
Isn't that nice?